I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Risica. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Serasky.
Here.
Mrs. Gasky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanez.
Here.
And Mrs. Zierko.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Gasky.
Move to approve the agenda moving item 7F of the consent agenda to consideration 8B.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion?
Which part of the consent agenda is being moved?
7F is going to be moved to consideration 8B.
Okay.
Anything else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I first want to make sure everyone knows about Oktoberfest, which is very quickly coming up. The fall's Oktoberfest will take place in lieu of Sterling Fest, obviously, this year, and it will be on October 8th, starting at 4:00 p.m., and Saturday, October 9th, starting at 11:00 a.m. The two national acts that'll be featured on the stage in Dodge Park include plain white tees on October 8th with their claim to fame song, "Hey There, Delilah," and also Lou Gramm, the original voice of Foreigner, with Asia featuring John Payne on October 9th. So we look forward to seeing all of you there. This will be a great time. Obviously, a different format this year, but we know there's already a lot of excitement generated. We look forward to seeing you all there. In addition, there will be the Suds and Sounds stage inside what's known as a farmer's market pavilion, so you can look forward to that entertainment as well, leading up to the national acts. And so go to our website if you'd like to get more information, or certainly our Facebook page. But again, that's October 8th and the 9th for Oktoberfest. And speaking of Oktoberfest, you know, we're very fortunate that we have a lot of corporate support of Sterling Fest, and it's no different this year for Oktoberfest. One of our larger donations is coming to us via AT&amp;T, and I just wanted to highlight their very generous donation of $10,000. We're very lucky to continue to have AT&amp;T support our event, and we have many other sponsors and donors as well, so we'll be highlighting them leading up to the event. And continuing on with generosity in the community and our corporate leaders, I'd like to also thank Ford Motor Company, who very graciously donated almost 100,000 children's size face masks to the city. So if any of you know of any groups that you're affiliated with involving children that may need masks, simply call 446-CITY, and we'll arrange distribution to you. So that could be schools, it could be houses of worship, it could be daycare centers, it could be families across the city. So anyone that needs children's size face masks, we're happy to get them distributed to you. So again, I want to thank Ford Motor Company for delivering three pallets of these masks to us, so we're well-stocked, and we look forward to getting them all distributed. And Mayor, lastly, on my report this evening, I wanted to provide an introduction to Jason Marado, who's the Director of Community Research at the ETC Institute. And he has been leading the efforts of our survey that we've done the last couple of times. As the community may know, we conduct a survey every few years, three, four years, to see how we're doing, to gauge our services in the spirit of continuous improvement, to see where we need to improve. And we just completed the survey. We thank the community for participating. It's not an easy process to go through. It takes some time, and you have to actually fill out the mail survey, so we really do appreciate the community input. And this evening, we're very happy to be able to provide the results. So I'd like to call on Mr. Marado to come up and present, and I think it'll be very meaningful to the community. And we use this throughout the year, leading up to strategic planning, to fine-tune our services, and of course, make adjustments where needed.
Great, thank you. Well, it's great to be here again in Sterling Heights. I was here four years ago to present the results of the resident survey. So again, my name's Jason Marado with ETC Institute. And ETC is a marketing research firm that specializes in conducting community surveys for city and county governments. And this past summer, for the second time, we conducted a resident survey for the city of Sterling Heights. So today, I'm going to go through the results of the survey. The full report is very detailed and comprehensive, so today, I'm going to go through the high-level key findings from the survey. I have just one slide about ETC Institute. We're based in Olathe, Kansas, which is in the Kansas City area, but we're one of the nation's leading firms in providing market research for local governments. We've been doing this type of work for over 35 years, and in the last 10 years alone, we've conducted surveys with more than 900 communities all across the country. So this is really the type of work that we specialize in. This is just a quick rundown of what I'll go through today. I'll go over the purpose and methodology of the survey. What I call the bottom line up front is our main conclusions from the survey boil down to one PowerPoint slide, and then I'll go through the major findings to show how we came to those conclusions, and of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions as So there's several reasons to conduct a survey like this. One is to get an objective assessment of how satisfied residents are with major city services, and then also to determine what Sterling Heights residents feel are the top priorities for the community, and then also we're able to compare your results with other communities across the country on both a regional and a national basis, and that's based on data that ETC Institute has collected. So the survey was administered by combination of mail and online to randomly select residents throughout the city, and that's our standard methodology for these surveys, is that mail-online combination. Our goal was to get at least 500 completed surveys, and we ended up with 524. And as we were administering the survey, we were monitoring the demographics of survey respondents to make sure it reflects the actual population of the city. So we made sure we had a good representation by key demographic areas such as age, race, ethnicity, and gender. And the results of the 524 surveys, at the 95% level of confidence, has a margin of error of plus or minus 4.3%. So essentially, that means that if we conducted the survey the same way 100 times, 95 times the results would be plus or minus 4.3% from what we're reporting. So the results aren't perfect, but really, it is a very small margin of error. So here, we have a map of the city. The red dots are households that completed the survey, so we had a good distribution throughout the city. So here are our main conclusions from the survey. We found that residents have a very positive perception of the city. 86% of respondents were satisfied with Sterling Heights as a place to live, and 82% were satisfied with Sterling Heights as a place to raise children. Those numbers are much higher than the typical community, which you'll see when we look at the benchmarking comparisons in just a little bit. We also found that satisfaction with city services is much higher in Sterling Heights than it is in other communities, which wasn't a surprise because this was the case when we did the survey four years ago. You rated above the U.S. average in 43 out of the 48 areas that we compared, and in most cases, the ratings are significantly higher, 10% or more, in some cases even more than that. And there were a couple of areas that I especially wanted to point out. One is the overall quality of city services, where you're rated 19% above the U.S. average, and that's one of the most important questions on the survey, because they were asking if residents had taken into account all of the services that you're providing, and really given overall satisfaction rating for how well you're doing. And then another area that really stood out was the value that residents received for tax dollars and fees. There, you're rated 22% above the U.S. average. And then we found the top priorities for the community are maintaining neighborhood in major streets, traffic flow, visibility of police in neighborhoods, cleaning up litter and debris on a residential property, and then mowing grass and weeds on a residential property. These are the areas that residents identified as the most important for the city leaders to emphasize over the next couple of years. So first, we'll take a look at some general perceptions that residents have of the city. This next slide is the very first question on the survey. Here, we're asking residents to rate their perceptions of the city in a number of different ways. So you can see the dark blue are ratings are very satisfied, the light blue is satisfied, the gray is neutral, and we interpret neutral as meeting expectations. It's a rating of a three on the five-point scale. And then the pink are those who are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So there's a lot more blue than there is pink, which means obviously the positive rating's far outweigh the negative overall. So if you start at the top of this chart, residents gave very high ratings, so Sterling Heights is a place to live, the overall quality of life, overall image of the city, Sterling Heights is a place to raise children. And then if you look at that fifth row down, 77% of respondents are satisfied with the overall quality of city services, and that's compared to only 5% who are dissatisfied. So more than a 15-to-1 ratio of those who are satisfied versus dissatisfied with the overall quality of city services, which is a really, really outstanding ratio. Here, we asked residents how safe they feel in various situations, and you can see very few residents feel unsafe. In particular, most residents feel safe in their neighborhood during the day as well as at night. And then here, we have a map of the city, and what we did here is we broke the results out by census block group. So these are very small areas, and what this does is it tells us if residents in different parts of the city are rating services differently, or have different perceptions of the city. We created a map like this for every question on the survey, asked on a five-point scale, so the report has about 75 maps. This one is for the overall quality of city services, and you can see the entire map is blue, and in fact, you have some areas in dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. So this tells us that residents in all parts of the city are satisfied with the overall quality of city services. Sometimes what happens is even if the ratings are very high overall, once you break the results into these small geographic areas, you'll see some areas where residents aren't as satisfied, or feel like they're not getting as good of services as people in other parts of the city. Here, you can see that's not the case at all. And this map is for how residents feel about Sterling Heights as a place to live. Again, not only is the entire map blue, but good portions of it are dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. So residents throughout the city are satisfied with Sterling Heights as a place to live. So we also found that satisfaction ratings with city services are much higher in Sterling Heights than other communities. So for these next few charts, the blue line are Sterling Heights residents who are either very satisfied or satisfied. The red bar are satisfaction ratings from residents in the north-central region, so that includes the state of Michigan as well as a few surrounding states. And then the yellow bar are the satisfaction ratings from residents from all across the U.S. So this first chart is for perceptions of the community, and you can see in all areas, Sterling Heights residents are much more satisfied than most residents are in their community. In particular, if you look at the fourth row down, overall quality of city services, you received a 77% satisfaction rating, and the regional and national average are both below 60%. And then if you look at the row below that, value residents receive for tax dollars and fees, you had a 66% satisfaction rating, which maybe doesn't seem as high compared to some of the other areas on the survey, but you can see the regional and national average are both below 45%. So for that category, 66% is a really, really good rating. Here are the comparisons for public safety, and in eight, seven out of the 11 areas, your ratings are significantly higher than the national average. That includes the overall quality of fire protection, the overall quality of emergency medical services, and the overall quality of local police protection. Here are comparisons for feeling of safety. You see Sterling Heights residents feel safer than residents in other communities, both in their neighborhood at night and during the day. And then here are comparisons for parks and recreation and city events. All seven areas rate much higher than the regional and national average. In particular, the ratings are really high for recreation programming for adults, seniors, and youth. In all three areas, the ratings are just about double the regional and national average. And then for code enforcement, all five areas rate above the regional and national average, but four areas are significantly above, and by significantly, I mean 5% or more above the regional and national average. And then for maintenance, eight of the 11 areas rate significantly higher than the national average. Neighborhood streets and traffic flow are some of the lowest-rated areas on the survey, but even those aren't really too far below the regional and national average. And then for city leadership and communication, all five areas rate significantly above the national average. If you look at the second row from the bottom, overall quality of leadership provided, you have a 60% satisfaction rating, and the regional and national average is only 44%. So that's one of the areas where you rate the farthest above other communities. So now we'll take a look at top community priorities. So we have some analysis in the report called the Important Satisfaction Analysis, and the idea behind that is the areas that have a combination of lower satisfaction, but at the same time are rated as the most important, are the areas we identify as the highest priorities to focus on. So that includes maintaining neighborhood and major city streets, traffic flow, visibility of police in neighborhoods, cleanup of litter and debris on residential property, and then mowing of grass and weeds on residential property. Now, when you look at the benchmarking comparisons, these areas are either a little below, or in some cases even a little above the national average. So it's not that the satisfaction ratings are really low for these areas, but just lower compared to the other items on the survey, combined with these are the areas that residents feel are the most important to focus on. So we have a few other findings to take a look at. We asked residents which methods they use to get information about city-related issues, and you can see the top two sources are city sources, the city website, and the city magazine. Those are also the top two sources the last time we did the survey. And then we asked residents if the city should allow up to four chickens to be kept on residential properties within the city's neighborhoods. So 30% said yes, 70% no. And then we asked residents if they feel that Sterling Heights is an inclusive community. So if you look at the blue pieces of the pie, you can see that over 90% of respondents do feel that Sterling Heights is an inclusive community. So just a quick recap, we saw that residents have a very positive perception of the city. Obviously, city services are much higher in Sterling Heights than other communities. Couple of areas that especially stood out were the overall quality of city services, and then the value residents are receiving for tax dollars and fees. And then the top priorities were those identified in the important satisfaction analysis, which is in the full survey findings report. So that's everything that I had. Obviously, the results are very, very positive overall, once again, just like they were the last time we conducted the survey. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Marado? Mr. Radke?
I have a brief question. On page 106 of the summary, you asked people to self-describe their ethnic origins. In there, it says Arab, Middle Eastern. You have 25 people who identified that way, 5% of the population, but our own internal survey says it's more like 25% of the population are Middle Eastern here in Sterling Heights. I'm wondering how the survey can be accurate if it's not engaging with what would be a quarter of our population.
Hmm. You know, I'd have to check the U.S. Census numbers on that. I didn't realize it was that high. What is that?
It would be Chaldean.
Okay.
We have a lot of Chaldeans here in Sterling Heights. And I'm just curious, because 77% white Caucasian makes sense, because that correlates with our numbers, and maybe people are identifying themselves as white instead of Arab, Middle Eastern.
Right.
But it would strike me that if you go to the west side of our city, anything west of Mountain Road, you're going to be in a very large Chaldean enclave, and if they're not represented in the survey, I have to wonder about its accuracy.
Right. Well, we can always weight the data or run some cross tabs to see the differences.
I'm curious to see the cross tabs, because...
Yeah, we certainly could do that, to see if there are differences. Yeah, these demographics are very similar to what we had the last time we conducted the survey.
We can kind of cross-tap it across with the new census data that just is emerging to make sure that we're being accurate.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
Okay. That's why I'm interested in that, because if that's not correct, then I'd wonder about the entire efficacy of the survey. We're only hitting one half of our study then, in my opinion.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of ways. You have to look at the demographic data, the age groups are right on target, the geographic location, the gender. For that area, yeah, we can just run some cross tabs and see what the differences are.
I do polling for a living, too, so that's what I'm...
Yeah.
First thing I looked at was the cross tabs.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Serasky.
Just as an aside to that, I have some very close Chaldean friends. They do not identify as Arab-American. They identify as white American. So that might be part of that right there.
Right.
And that's all I have to say for that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mrs. Serasky, because there is a distinction between Arab and Chaldean. How many... Do you know how many surveys were mailed out or sent out?
Surveys were mailed to 3,200 households, and the reason for that is we were expecting about a 15% response rate, so we were a little above that, about 16%.
Okay, very good. Anyone else, counsel?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, briefly one more. And then if you look at the self-described ethnic origin, two people actually identified themselves as other Chaldean-American, which is interesting on the same thing. All I have, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. Marado. We appreciate you coming and presenting the results of it. There's a lot for us to dig into, and certainly is very helpful, and we appreciate your expertise. So, thank you.
Great, thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation. This is to recognize and thank the employees and citizens who contributed to the planning, certification, and operation of the city's vaccination centers at the Senior Center and Lakeside Mall. We have a presentation from our fire chief, Chief Kevin Edmund. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Kuschubsky. As the community has been dealing with COVID-19 since March of 2020, we've been through a lot of peaks and valleys over that year and a half. One of the things that's impressed me about Sterling Heights is the ability to come together as a community to keep the community safe. So as soon as testing was available, the members of the fire department, along with city administration, made sure that we were able to test our employees. That was... Had the ability to keep the residents safe, too, through that process. When the vaccines became available, the city quickly stood up the senior center with the vaccination effort, and then started planning for the Sears drive-through site. None of things could be possible without the hard work of many individuals, and tonight, I would like to start by thanking all the city departments that participated during the vaccination process. DPW, the IT department, facilities, police, finance, Parks and Rec, especially Kristen Briggs and Bobby Wilson, members of both the Sterling Heights Fire Department and Shelby Township Fire Department, and for administering vaccination, council members who volunteered on those days to help us at the vaccination centers. The city administration for their support throughout this process, and all this teamwork, we were able to accomplish many great things during this last year and a half. As the fire chief, I would like to present some awards to key individuals who could be with her tonight. For the rest of the individuals, I would ask that their names be entered into the council records, and they will be sent their awards. I don't want to forget anybody, and I apologize ahead of time if I do, and please let me know. So I'd like to go through some of the key individuals that helped us. Dr. Michael Feld, if they would come up, he would come up, please. Dr. Feld is our medical director for the Sterling Heights Fire Department, and he was the key person to help us get our MICRS license, which allowed us to do the vaccination effort. He also was able to sign standing orders that allowed us to administer the vaccinations at the Sears site. So thank you, doctor. The next award that I'd like to present is Chief Miller. Through his leadership prior to me coming here, he was able to work with B.C. Walker to get the testing undertaken, and also lay the groundwork for the vaccination center at Lakeside. And he helped manage the vaccination center at times, and when needed, often gave shots at the site. So thank you. The next person is EMS coordinator Kelly Bergen. Kelly regularly helped out at the vaccination center. He also oversaw the vaccine MICRS data registration, and anytime we needed something, this was the guy that I went to to get it, and any data entry issues that we had with MICRS. So thank you. I'd also like to thank Kyle Langston, Parks and Recreational Director. When the city started the vaccination center, he offered up his employees to help out. He would often call people when we needed to fill those extra doses, so we didn't waste many. We did a good job with that, so I'm very proud of that. And he offered us support during the music in the park when we did that. He'd offer refreshments to us and chairs for us to do that, entertaining. So with that, thank you. As you can see, there's many individuals that help keep the community safe. If I forget one, again, I apologize. I'm very proud to be part of this organization, and I'm honored to lead the men and women of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate everything that the fire department did. It was really an incredible effort from between the Senior Center, where my wife volunteered one day a week, and the Lakeside Sears Center. It was an efficient operation, and I'm proud that the city of Sterling Heights and our fire department played a major role in keeping our residents and the surrounding area safe. And obviously, we encourage you, or I shouldn't speak for anyone other than myself. I encourage you to get vaccinated if you haven't been. If you're curious about it, if you're skeptical, if you don't know, please talk to your doctor. That's all I ask. Talk to your doctor. Don't listen to me. I said it before at a council meeting. I don't know what's in the vaccine. I don't know if it works. I don't know if it... I don't know if it doesn't work. But your doctor does. Talk to him or her, and take their advice, please, we implore you. Counsel, anyone else? Any comments or anything for the fire... Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So to the chief and to all of you, thank you. I was honored to be able to come a couple of weekends and give some of those vaccines myself as a nurse, and so it was wonderful to be a part of that. So I do have, I will say, as a nurse, to please those of you who can be vaccinated, please be vaccinated. If you are questioning, ask your doctor, as Mayor Taylor said, for any additional medical advice. Your doctor can answer your questions, but please, it is the best-known way to get rid of this virus, to continue to keep everyone healthy, to keep our young children healthy, who are now the greatest and largest demographic of cases now with COVID. So please, if we can, if you can, please try to get yourselves vaccinated. But again, to our department and all of the volunteers and people that did help with that vaccine, thank you. And that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mr. Yenness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say how proud I am of not only the fire department, but the community in general. I'm going to read off some names here, not to upstage the chief, but the folks that couldn't be here tonight. Battalion Chief Will Walker, who was actually my rookie at one time, and now he's a battalion chief, did a fantastic job. We had a number of retirees, Kevin Conlin, Mark Schrader, and Bill Ozadil were there, helping out on a regular basis, I think almost on a daily basis, at the drive-through center. And I personally worked with a couple of young ladies from DPW who were directing traffic. So this was a huge community effort for a huge community need. Everybody came together, did an excellent job, threw this thing together in the blink of an eye. It's just amazing how fast this got put together. And everybody did a fantastic job, and it really is a highlight of what's been a very difficult year. So I just want to say thank you again to everybody who participated in this, and congratulations on your awards. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Yenness. Ms. Zarco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I too. I can't say enough about the process itself. We were very lucky to have it at the Senior Center first. I volunteered one day a week. My daughter volunteered another day a week. And so it wasn't just the vaccinations, it was the interaction between our firefighters or any men or personnel that were there that would ease somebody's fear about the vaccine. You know, even though they were coming there, they knew they were coming there, but a lot of times, there was anxiety attacks because they didn't know what was going to happen. But the interaction and the time that it took, you know, everybody took to calm them down was what I was most impressed with. But the question that I have, do we have an idea of how many vaccinations that were administered either at the Senior Center and at Lakeside as a total? Do we keep track of that? Did...
It's over 10,000 doses.
Okay. And it's incredible, 10,000 doses. The other thing is, you know, and surely Mr. Langlos can appreciate this, is, well, there was the center, the Senior Center was only open until a certain time. And if you had five doses, all of a sudden, it was like everybody was on their phone trying to find somebody that needed a vaccination to get them there so that we didn't waste any doses. But it was the, you know, talking about coming alive every afternoon between 2:30 and 3 o'clock to make sure that we could get those doses in somebody's arms. So I'm really proud of the fact that the city did a great job in immunizing 10,000 people. That's remarkable. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Counsel, anyone else? If not, one more big round of applause for our fire department and everyone else. Thank you all so much for contributing and helping make that happen here in the city of Sterling Heights. We really, really greatly appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda with the omission of item F. Oh, you know what? I might have breezed by that. There is a suggested action, counsel, so we'll go back to the presentation. Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yenness?
I resolved to recognize and thank all the employees and citizens who contributed to the successful planning, certification, and operation of the city's vaccination centers at the Senior Center and Lakeside Mall, and their collective efforts to protect public health.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With that, now we will move on to the consent agenda with the omission of item F. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda as amended? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights' boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we have four positions tonight. One is the second step, that is, the nomination of Brandy Wright to the Planning Commission. Is there anyone who'd like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolved to appoint Brandy Wright to the Planning Commission to a term ending June 30th, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is a vacancy in the Ethnic Community Committee. This is a mayoral appointment. My recommendation is Vipul Kumar Tripathy for this vacancy. If there's somebody on the council who would like to make that appointment, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolved on the advice of the mayor to appoint Vipul Ratham...
Vipul Kumar Tripathy.
Vipul Kumar Tripathy. Pardon me, I'm so sorry, I didn't say it right. To the Ethnic Community Committee to a term ending June 30th, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next up is the Library Board of Trustees. This is a council appointment to a partial term ending June 30, 2024. Is there anyone who'd like to make this appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolved to appoint, I think it's Catherine McCarthy, to the Library Board of Trustees to a term ending June 30th, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, just as a matter of clarification. Is it Catherine McKinney?
McKinley. I'm sorry, it's McKinley.
McKinney or McKinley? I think it's Catherine McKinney.
Catherine McKinney.
Catherine McKinney.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's been moved and supported. Counsel, any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next is the Sustainability Commission. This is a council appointment to a partial term ending June 30, 2022. Counsel, is there anyone who has an appointment? If not, I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to the next council meeting, which appears to be October 5th, 2021.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is Consent Agenda Item F, which is to approve a professional consulting services agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Pratt International LLC for services rendered in support of the Sterling Heights African-American Coalition for a total cost of $40,200. Mr. Vanderpoel, any presentation on this tonight?
Sure, Mayor, if you'd like. I'd be happy to make some brief comments on this and also introduce some audience members. So first, just by way of introduction, consistent with the city's visioning 2030 plan in inclusivity, the city formed the Sterling Heights African-American Coalition in June of 2020. So the founding purpose of the coalition was to provide a sustainable channel for dialogue and understanding between the city and its approximately 9,000 African-American residents, a population segment in our community that is growing very rapidly, by the way, as validated by the recent 2020 census. In fact, it grew by 30% over that census period. Through meetings, programming, and events, the African-American Coalition is intended to be the catalyst for creating true racial equity and opportunity for the African-American population within Sterling Heights. So let me just highlight a few of the objectives that were used throughout this process. First, the consultant services that are before you this evening are expected to achieve the following. Development of cultural competence through education, creation of a safe climate where both African-Americans and residents from other races are able to speak freely, yet respectfully, to promote open, insightful dialogue between all community members, regardless of race, implement best practices and benchmarking to ensure that equity and opportunity is realized by members of the Sterling Heights African-American Coalition. And let me just delve a little deeper into some of the more specific action, actionable items. So first, to identify and review existing community survey data to influence the design of meetings and events that the African-American Coalition is conducting, and they meet minimumly monthly, maybe more frequently in the future. So you heard the survey results this evening. That's an effort that we need to delve much deeper into and do some cross-tabulations based on race and ethnicity, and there's a lot of good data there, but we really have to mine that data as well. Facilitation of meetings with the Sterling Heights African-American Coalition leadership and community leadership to engage in oversight of the project mission and create working group plans. So the coalition is a rather larger group, and their plan is to certainly identify work groups to achieve much of their scope of work. Establish a conflict resolution plan, to the extent that's needed, and certainly is likely a best practice. Assign roles and responsibilities to ensure creation of a sustainable African-American coalition in Sterling Heights. And as I mentioned earlier, research best practices throughout the country, where communities already have well-established coalitions, and learn from what they have done. Establish and confirm a clear mission, vision, and values to create smart goals and objectives for the coalition. Establish a calendar of events, activities, meetings, that educate and engage the community to ensure alignment with the Sterling Heights African-American Coalition and their objectives. And this is really important, and equally important, identify and establish a list of potential partners for outreach and promotion of the coalition's mission. And again, critically important in terms of collaboration and engagement, design and conduct a community town hall to share findings and solicit feedback from the community. Obviously, a critical component to any sort of coalition building. Deploy cohesive messaging from a communication plan that includes goals, objectives, and implementation steps. So that is the intended outcome of the consultant services. We expect the services will be completed over a six-to-seven month period of time. The cost of the services is $40,200. And I did want to introduce a couple of individuals in the audience. First, Eric Hawkins, who worked very hard with Melanie Davis, our Community Relations Director, getting us to the point we're at this evening to be able to recommend these consultant services. Mr. Hawkins has, along with other members from the African-American Coalition, has vetted the scope of service and feels very comfortable with it, and the African-American Coalition certainly supports and recommends a consultant group that's before you. The lead consultant is also here this evening, Darnell Blackburn with Pratt, and we've been very fortunate to work with Mr. Blackburn over the years. He's done a lot of training in our police department, including implicit bias training, which, according to our police chief and the members that went through it, they thought it was just outstanding training. So he comes to us with a great deal of experience and expertise. And also Rhonda Powell with O'Neil Powell and Associates. She is also working on the project, and I've had the good fortune of working with Ms. Powell on a number of projects at the state level, and she, too, comes to us, highly recommended. So we're very excited about this process. We look forward to the continued collaboration with the African-American Coalition, and we're happy to answer any additional questions that you may have. But aside from that, we plan on hitting the ground running as quickly as possible. And with all that said, we certainly respectfully recommend the mayor and city council approval of this agreement this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, this was pulled off the consent agenda. Ms. Kosky, do you have a motion, Mrs. Kosky?
No, sir.
Okay, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolved to approve the professional consulting services agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Pratt International LLC, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Well, there's... I could go on for about a half an hour, but I won't. I think this is a really good idea. Some of the positives that I see is that the African-American Coalition actually did the interviews, and also they chose the consultants that they wanted them, to help them in this process. This is so new that this... We're being watched throughout the entire state, is to see how successful this program's going to be. And it's something that we talk about at the Michigan Municipal League, is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think this is so important to do it right, because we want this to be successful. So I'm in favor of this. I think this is some... I think we've, as a city and its administration, have taken you as far as we can go, because we haven't been in your places. We haven't walked those steps. So I think that we've done what we can, and now it's up to you to tell us how much farther you want to go with this, and where you want to take us with you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mr. Yenness? Anything? Mr. Radke?
I'm strongly in favor of this.
Okay, counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Sarowski?
Is it possible, through the chair, that we could... I think that the consultants may want to say a few things that you gave them... You kind of quickly ran through there. I think that they did want to say a few things from the audience.
You know, I'm always quick with the hook.
You were quick. You were very quick.
But there's plenty of opportunity. Mr. Blackburn, any comments? We would...
Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Welcome them, appreciate them, and Ms. Powell, yours as well.
They were trying to get up, and you went right past them.
She's got a veteran...
First off, we thank you. We thank you guys for the opportunity. We really didn't... We were... Any questions that you have for us, we wanted to answer. We didn't want to actually... Nothing further. We appreciate you, Councilwoman. You're absolutely correct, and I think that's been the feeling that we got from the coalition as well, and from Ms. Clark as well. So we're excited about the opportunity, and any questions that you may have for us with regard to the scope. It's a lofty scope, and we are going to hit the ground running, but I think the big thing is having relationships and rapport, and really, really working through this. So just any questions that you may have for us, or anything you have?
No, same. I echo what Darnell said, and we look forward to hitting the ground running.
Mrs. Sarowski, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I do have a question. So what is your initial plan? What is your first thing that you want to do?
First thing is to meet with the coalition.
Say hi!
Because we haven't had the pleasure of meeting with the entire coalition. We've been interviewed by a subcommittee, so that is the very first plan, is to sit down and meet with them and kind of figure out, you know, what the overarching goals are, and then kind of move from there. So that's our very first thing. We got to figure out, you know, how it's been working and try to get through an improvement process. Not that it's broken now, but just to make it better.
Very good. Well, we're excited to have you, so thank you.
Could you answer a resident? If a resident... If a resident were to say, you know, why do we need to do this? What is the point here? What are we trying to do? Can you, can you, if you were talking to that resident, what would you say to them?
I'd say, number one, the census data proves one reason why we need to do it. Traditionally, and being from Detroit originally, Sterling Heights was always Sterling Whites, you know, in transparency. And the reality is that this is not the same Sterling Heights or Sterling Whites that it was. And with that being said, we need to make sure, you guys have done a good, a great job of promoting the city, but we need to make sure that it's promoted for people of color and that they recognize that they're valuable and that they are wanted here. And so that is the biggest push, is to make sure that we get people to understand that that's our purpose. We're not excluding anybody. We're just trying to make sure that everyone feels included and creating that pathway.
Yeah, I would echo that. And, you know, as someone who grew up, you know, down Metro Parkway in Mount Clemens, you know, same thing, that it was, Sterling Heights did have a negative connotation. But the work that all of you have done, that should be promoted. It should be echoed. We need more of it. I think, I would say to that resident that, you know, this is an opportunity to create a model, not only for Macomb County, but across the state, you know, and beyond, really. Because folks are trying to figure out how to do this and how to have these conversations and make everyone feel welcome. So the bottom line is, you know, let's get a bigger table. We don't have to figure out who gets to sit at the table. We'll just keep increasing the table.
Well said, well said. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Kowski?
Thank you. Mr. Darnell, or I should say, Mr. Blackburn.
Whatever is fine.
You have a tremendous reputation. I understand that you have worked with our police department, and they just love you. You've done a fantastic job with them.
You'll make me cry.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to do that. Your credentials are amazing. You also have a degree in marketing, I believe.
Business, businessman, business.
Okay. It said marketing. And Ms. Powell, I don't know you, but if he recommends you, then you must be fantastic too.
Thank you.
My problem with this is, I think that you're aware that we hired Ms. King to do some work for us, diversity, inclusion, and everything, to check out the city, do some research, visit with all the departments, and make sure that our policies and procedures and everything were where they should be. Now, I don't know how long she has been working on this because it's been a while now, but her cost is seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, we're going to pay you forty thousand two hundred, a hundred dollars an hour, and I'm sure that you're worth every single penny of it with your credentials. I don't dispute that one single bit. Plus, we're going to give you mileage and lodging when necessary. You have set out a schedule for it.
Yeah, it's all inclusive. We're not doing mileage, and that's inclusive. So mileage and lodging.
Change your contract then.
I think it should be, I think it's modified. It should have been.
It's good.
It didn't in my copy.
Okay.
Okay. So this is where I have my problem because I'm thinking that we are duplicating some of the services that we're getting from Ms. King. We're also going to get basically the same thing from you. Okay? That's my problem. So straighten me out. Correct me.
So.
Number one.
Okay. I'm sorry. Let me wait. Yeah, let me let you finish it.
Go ahead.
Well, I didn't want to cut you off. If you have more, more, because I want to respond, but I want you to get everything out. Was there more to that?
Well, I thought I'd just lay it all out and then you can tell me where I'm wrong. How's that? Okay. You're projecting that you're going to work like fifteen hours a week, four weeks out of a month, and work it down over the months for your total. For the first month, you're going to do discovery. Second month is planning. Third month is implementation. And it goes on each month. Why are you taking so long? What discovery do you have to do? What are you talking about? Are you going to rely on what Ms. King is going to give or are you going to create your own? This is where I'm having my problem. What is discovery? Who are you going to talk to? Our commission, our group, I'm told, consists of between twenty and thirty people. Do you also, are you also going to do like Ms. King did? Come into the city, talk to employees that are African American? Are you going to talk to all the employees or are you going to concentrate only on African American? What are you looking for in this planning? What are you looking for as far as those two months? That's where I'm having my problem. As those two months, I cannot justify. Now, if you told me you were going to do it for twenty thousand, I'd probably say, ah, have fun, go ahead. But those two months tell me you're doing the same thing that Ms. King did, and she charged us seventy-five thousand, you would only charge us twenty, but help me out.
Okay. So we'll start first by saying that I don't, we don't have Mrs. King's contract, so we don't know exactly what her scope is. So I'll speak to that, number one. Number two, in terms of what we're doing, we're not just, I think, if even from hearing, and this is just hearing, you guys can correct me, but Mrs. King's focus is on the employees within the city. She is focused on that. Now, our goal is to speak to employees within the city as well. We're not trying to duplicate what she's doing, but our focus is more so toward the residents of the city. And that's what the Coalition, I think, is comprises more so, as I understand, are the residents. The employees of the city, we will kind of look at that and kind of talk to them, but our scope is to be open more so to the community residents, whereas the employees, I mean, they're here because they're employees. The residents, we want to get people into the city. So our planning sessions, we're not trying to jump in and just start shoving things down. We want to look and take a bird's eye view and then make decisions. We want to go through this. Our goal ultimately is to allow the Coalition to run whatever independently looks like, independently and collectively. Our goal is not to be here to come back later on to say we want to amend our contract. Our goal is to allow the Coalition to run and to be self-sufficient so that they can continue to make Sterling Heights look like a place that's inclusive for all, whether you're an employee or whether you're a resident, and more so specifically directed toward the residents. So that's our purpose and our idea. As far as Mrs. King goes, I don't think that, we're not opposed to working or if at all possible, working with her, but we're not relying on her at all. We, I only know that she's consulting with you guys because I heard from someone else. This was never even brought to my attention from this project. So we don't look to piggyback or dovetail, unless it's a benefit. Yeah, a compliment to anything else. So you can address any further.
Yes. And I'll speak to some of the discovery and planning. So there are a few cities around the country that are really doing a great job in putting some things in place. Hennepin County is one in Minneapolis. They have a lot of plans that they've put together, a lot of research that they've done. And that's one of the areas that we want to use for discovery, to look at what's been done already because we definitely don't want to reinvent the wheel. So those are some, we'll look at comparative data, demographic comparative, that kind of stuff. And as for the planning, that is just because we can't do the planning in a vacuum. So that gives us time to work with the city, to work with the Coalition, and to talk with different folks about, you know, just making sure that we're implementing a plan because ultimately we don't have to, you know, the plan has to be owned by Sterling Heights, by the Coalition. And the way forward, we have to have buy-in for that. So making sure that we're all on the same page before, you know, we don't want to just come in and bring yesterday's plan and, you know, kind of try and form fit that for this project. So the discovery is more, you know, looking at current data that's out there, looking at what other cities have done and implemented. And we, of course, are familiar with some of that, but we will look a little bit more intimately. Also looking at, the new census data is out, what data exists that we can aggregate that with to really make sure that the Coalition gets off on a solid foundation.
So basically, the first two months, you're going to be doing research, gathering information before you actually do anything with the Coalition?
No, ma'am. We'll be walking and chewing gum at the same time.
Yeah, we're going to be doing both. I mean, we're, because our, and that's, that's the point of having, actually, you know, we're working under the umbrella of Pride LLC, but you're actually getting, you know, two consultants for one, so to speak. And that, the actual, so the relationships that you spoke of allow me to really engage the community with regard to those relationships. And Ms. Powell's background in the data, in aggregating this data and pulling this information allows her to look at this and for us to come together and say, okay, this is the path we want to take, along with the consent of the Coalition themselves as to how we want to drive the ship or what our end goal is, which is to have them sustain themselves and to continue to be progressive and move forward and be a model for everybody to see.
So you're meeting with the Coalition. Does that amount to their once-a-month meeting or do you plan on setting up weekly meetings with them or what? What's your plan with the Coalition?
Definitely not a one, we, well, I mean, obviously, based on the availability of Coalition, we can't do, a once-a-month meeting with them would not, nowhere near, I mean, we'd be violating the contract as well. We're not, we're looking to engage the Coalition as much as possible in, if that be leadership or subgroup, those are things that we need to determine, you know, subcommittees as we meet with the Coalition. But it definitely will not be just a once-a-month meeting and us saying, you know, we can't gather and ascertain the information that we need from that timeframe. So absolutely, it'll be way more than once a month from the perspective that we have. Obviously, with the Coalition, you know, whoever they designate and that kind of thing. So, but absolutely, we'll be moving forward a lot.
Will you be reporting to counsel as to your progress or is this something that just applies to the commission?
Now, per the actual, and I can't remember, I think per the actual, our contract, at the end, we do submit a report at the end. So we did not submit it to report out to counsel throughout. Our goal was to report to the Coalition regularly and if they want to report something out to you guys, not that it's a secret, but to just deal with the Coalition and report any findings or any information that we have. And if they choose to report it out, they can report it to counsel. But at the end, I know we're going to submit a report to you guys in the very end.
So if we want to check on you, we attend the meetings?
You're more than welcome. Absolutely. You're more than welcome. Yep, absolutely. You want my personal number? I don't want to read it to the record. I'll tell you afterward. No, you're more than welcome. More than welcome.
Well, like I said, I, my concern is a duplication of efforts because forty thousand two hundred would buy me another truck, an F-250 with a snowplow.
No.
Not anymore.
No.
Not anymore.
So give my point.
Yeah, we do. We understand that, but that's, that's the rate, we research, that's where we are as consultants. And thank you for the compliment. Based on our experience, we're going to bring you a great product. So that's what we're doing.
So you're going to put that in red writing?
Yes, ma'am. You got it. Great product.
Thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate that and I wish you well.
Thank you, Ms. Kowski. Anyone else, counsel? Mr. Vanderpoel, anything you want to clarify about Mrs. King and her involvement with the city?
Sure, Mayor. Be happy to. And I appreciate Councilman Kowski raising the issue. So Mrs. King is focusing on developing a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan for the organization. As Mr. Blackburn indicated, it's mutually exclusive of this effort that you're considering this evening, which is more of a community-driven effort. The DEI plan, again, is very specific to the city organization, our employees. Many large organizations now have DEI plans. Unfortunately, government, not so much. So we want to make sure that we're on the cutting edge with this. We know that as an organization, best practice is that we should reflect the demographics of our community, representing all races and ethnicities and religions and the like. That is the best practice, and that's the goal we need to achieve as an organization. That's what we're working toward. But you need to have a plan in order to get there. So that's what Mrs. King is working on with us as an organization to develop that DEI plan. Now, as was indicated, there could be some collaboration. I would hope there would be, but, you know, that will come about as the processes continue to unfold. The DEI plan will take approximately a year to create, and then that will sow the seeds for the organization long-term, by way of which we then need to implement, which could take years to implement. But we want to keep making progress. This effort before you this evening is approximately six to seven months, and again, is more community-driven. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor Taylor?
Yeah. Mrs. Zarco, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry, just one more question. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. This isn't the first time that we've actually supported one of our commissions monetarily in a project that they're working on, you know, this isn't unusual, is what I'm saying, is to support a commission monetarily.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, no, you're correct. We have often worked and collaborated with groups throughout the community. Many come to mind. The Sterling Heights Regional Chamber, excuse me, Foundation is a group that we worked closely to sow the seeds with decades ago, and they then formed after collaborating with the city under a separate organization, and they've been performing philanthropic work across the city and the region for many years now. Most recently, the city council worked very closely to sow the seeds to create the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. And that's, that group is just doing amazing work. So there's many examples where the city has worked in collaboration with efforts like this and initiatives that have proven to be very successful for the community.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kowski?
With that being said, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, whose budget is this money coming out of?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you. Councilman Kowski, this will be coming out of the Community Relations Department budget. That is where it's, the function has been housed, and I commend Melanie Davis and her team for helping get us to the point we're at now. So she'll continue to be very involved. By way of background too, this money has been budgeted, and so we do have dedicated financial resources.
Is there a limit as to how much we give to the different boards and commissions for projects like this or coalitions?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Councilman Kowski, there's not an arbitrary limit that's ever been set, to my knowledge. It's conceivable, depending on how the group ultimately organizes, that they may come back before the city council. I would expect they would at some point in time. There are many programs available to groups like this through our Community Development Block Grant, which you're very well aware of, in which you support not-for-profit organizations and historically have in the city of Sterling Heights.
My question was, do we give this large sum to different coalitions?
Yes. Councilman Kowski, as you well know, I mentioned the Community Foundation. We have historically supported the Community Foundation, both directly via financial resources and in-kind support services that far exceed this amount.
And we budget this every year in our budget, correct?
For the Community Foundation?
Well, different, what I'm saying is, you're telling us that we do spend some such as this to different coalitions, boards, commissions?
Absolutely.
And we budget it?
Correct.
So it's not just money that appears out of nowhere. It's. So it's not just money that appears out of nowhere. It's a budgeted, planned item.
That's correct.
Okay. So if I want some money for the CERT team to enhance their operation, I can put it in next year's budget, correct?
You know the budget process as well as anyone. You, it has to go through the budget process, and, and it, it may or may not be approved by City Council. But yes, you certainly have that opportunity.
Just remember that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much, Mrs. Kosky. We, we have spent a lot of time-
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Thank you. Before you have call of vote, I just wanted to speak briefly. I don't know why we're singling out this contract compared to other contracts. We, we, we've spent money on the CERT team. We did it last, not last year, but the year before. We bought them new uniforms. That was a twenty thousand dollar expense. We, we allocate, at least at one point, we allocate a hundred thousand dollars a year to the, the Arts Commission to buy public art in the city. This is no different. Their purpose is just different. Public art is for public art. This is to hope, hopefully help create an environment in the city where minority groups will not just want to live here, but will feel as a part of the entire table, to have a seat at the table and be able to talk with us. I mean, the idea behind this coalition was to create a situation where, I think at first we felt like we're talking past each other. And now we're talking with each other. And we're gonna grow this so we're all on the same page. I think that's a noble endeavor. So, yes, CERT gets money, and the Arts Commission gets money, and the library's gotten money every other year. Friends of the library get money. And we spent a ton of money fixing the Upton House so that they could give tours. That's to the Historical Commission. So I don't think of this in any other way than that. And I don't know why we're singling out this group compared to others. I think this is gonna be a necessary thing. I think it's gonna be a wonderful thing. I'm glad that the African-American Coalition vetted you, and they said that this is the best way forward. You come on the recommendation of our police, who also think that you're doing a wonderful work, and I, I commend you for that. And I, I'm gonna vote in favor of this contract, because I think it's wonderful. But we have to remember that it's not one versus another. We have a lot of committees here, and we spend a lot of money on them. And next year, I'm sure, maybe it won't be budgeted in Community Relations, it'll be budgeted someplace else. But this is a necessary spending, in my opinion, just to make sure that everyone feels included in Sterling Heights. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke.
Mr. Mayor?
We've gone back and forth and back and forth. I mean, we, we have to, how many times, Miss Kosky? I mean, I'll give you one more time, but let's, you know, we can't, we, we don't do this where everybody talks and then everybody-
Forget it.
-responds to what everybody else says. I mean, in my opinion, one of the things that we've been doing in Sterling Heights for the past five or six years, and for longer than, than that as well, but what we've really been emphasizing is not just investing in stuff. Like, we, we've, for a long time, prided ourselves on having a great police department, great fire department. We pride ourselves on, you know, when it snows, your roads are cleared so that you can get to and from where you're going. And Mrs. Kosky obviously takes a lot of pride in that, as we all do. But one of the things that we've been doing recently that I think separates us is that we invest in our people. We invest in the community, okay? There's nothing more important than the hundred and thirty-four thousand residents that we serve. And, you know, to be very blunt, we all look alike, okay? And we look different than you on the other side of the podium. And there's only so much we can do about that, okay? And to me, that's why this is critically important, is that we have a large segment of the population that's underserved, that's underrepresented. And that frankly, the, the most concerning thing to me was in talking with members of the African-American community, is that it's like, I don't have a voice, and I'm not gonna, so I don't even have any way to communicate. I don't have any way to, to let my voice be heard. So you're not gonna hear what my concerns are. And, and I've said it before, that if you don't feel welcome and included, then what are you doing? What, there's nothing worse. Like, what is the worst feeling? Being alone, right? Being, feeling like you haven't been heard. I'm an attorney, and in my, in my practice, sometimes you're on the phone and you're like, and I tell them, don't say this when you're in front of the judge, don't say it. But they don't care, because they just want to be heard. It's like, I don't even care if I lose the case. I just want somebody to hear me, okay? And that's so important. And so, to me, you know, it's been said, we, we've got the Community Foundation. We've got the Drug-Free Coalition that we spend resources and time and energy on. Our Quick Response Team, which has been wildly successful, where we send out a police officer to go to opioid epidemic, to go to houses where there's been somebody who's, who's overdosed. That's an example of the city spending money to help these coalitions. And so if there is another coalition out there that's like, hey, well, what about us? Come to the table, you know? Let us know. I got emails. Well, are you gonna do a coalition for this group, and that group, and that group? I hope so. I hope so, you know? Let's, let's, let's have everybody come to the table. So this is a, a minor expense, okay? It's not even an expense. It's an investment, okay? And the return on this investment is going to be ten, twenty, fifty, a hundredfold. So it's not even a question to me, okay? I'm really proud of it. I'm happy that you guys are here. I'm happy that you've been chosen, and I'm looking forward to working with you. So with that, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Yannis?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Raski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. Motion carries seven, zero. Congratulations. You're on board. And one clarification, I did check your, your contract, and it's all inclusive. Your, your rate, mileage, and all that's included. So, congratulations. Welcome aboard. We look forward to having you and working with you. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
All right. With that, we will move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm here to speak about the water bill. I don't know if people looked at their water bills or not, but I do. Every time I get one. The latest water bill shows an eight percent increase from last one. This paper that came in with the water bill says that the water charge is thirty-two percent, and the storage is sixty-eight percent. It's not true. Those figures that are on this, on this page do not correspond with the bill. Now, I'm not sure, somebody did some real creative accounting, I'll tell you. This does not show me that you're actually working for the people. You're fudging the numbers. And I'm gonna tell you again, there is no discount here for summer watering, which has been constant through many years, as far back as our ex-mayor. We no longer have any say in what you guys are doing. You're gonna put in new meters. I have no idea why we're putting new meters in. They're working fine. Again, you're gonna charge us for that? The, the water meters today are fine. We're working fine. DPW, I think, has been cut back too far. Back to the point where I, I commend them for what they do for the few people they have. But if you look at these rates that you put on the back of the bill, I've been here forty-four years. I've never seen anything like this, where you're charging a hundred, hundred and fourteen dollars to have somebody come out and test your meter. I've had my meter tested in the past. It cost me nothing. You're putting fees out here that are astronomical. Now, you keep getting rid of people from DPW, you keep hiring people from outside. That isn't gonna work, guys. Let me tell you something. Eventually, it's gonna catch up with you. I think we, people better start looking at their water bills. And then, the other one is about the snowbirds. I love this one. There's gonna be no charge for them. Well, let me tell you something. If somebody's gone for six months out of their house, they're gonna be using water whether they're in there or not. And for two reasons. One, they're gonna have to have heat, and if they have heat, they usually have their humidifiers on. That takes water. Secondly, most of us have two sump pump systems. And the reason is, if the power goes off, use water for the second system. Now, who's gonna pay for all that water if these guys gotta use it? And I hope everybody that goes to Florida or wherever has got a secondary system. Because if you go down and look at people that had only the primary system, you got furniture out there, you got beds out there, you got stuff all over the place.
All right, sir. Thank you. That's, that's your four minutes. We appreciate it. And, and we will get you answers. So if you want answers, stick around, because either I or another council member or Mr. Vanderpoel will go through and, and respond to, you know, all the questions that you had, okay? I appreciate it. Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, close that portion. Mr. Vanderpoel, so a number of issues were brought up. If you wouldn't mind addressing them, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, Mayor. And first, after the meeting, I'll, I'll get the resident's address, and we'll make sure we do a thorough analysis on your water bill and explain if there's any anomalies going on. But a couple of things. Let me start with the most important thing. First, when we look at average Macomb County residential monthly water and sewer bills, Sterling Heights ranks the lowest. Just by way of example, Frazier's monthly water and sewer bills is a hundred and forty dollars. Utica's is just over a hundred dollars. Shelby is seventy-nine dollars, on average monthly, these are. Warren's is sixty-seven dollars. Sterling Heights is the lowest, at sixty-four dollars on average per month. So we, we rank very favorably on this utility cost. And by the way, we are moving to monthly billing, which allows residents to have greater control and, and for planning purposes, over their water and sewer bills, rather than having to wait three months, especially if there's ever a problem. If you have a leaking toilet, to find out about that after three months, you're wasting hundreds of dollars. To find out about that after a month, you're saving hundreds of dollars. So monthly billing is gonna be a huge benefit for the community. We're replacing meters, because the existing meters are over thirty years old. And we want to move to meters and, and the ability to have electronic reads and have elec, automation that empowers residents, users, to better monitor and potentially control their water usage. We're also, and to that point, we're developing dynamic pricing, where you can use water at a more affordable cost based, based, based on the time of day that you may utilize it. So that could be a significant savings to residents. But you have to have a new infrastructure system in order to do that. So in addition to the meters being very old, malfunctioning in many cases, not reading properly, there's newer technology that's highly advantageous to utility customers. This has been done across the board, across the country, so we're not blazing a new path here. We've also developed a water rate structure that's far more advantageous to the vast majority of users across the city, especially those who were penalized for irrigating in, in summer months. We've eliminated that penalty. But I could go on and on. I, I want to draw people to our website. You can go to our website, and there's a complete explanation and FAQ about the new water rate structure, and also the new water meters that are being installed, a timeline and the like. It's very thorough. And if residents have any additional questions after reading through this material, we're happy to answer them. And I also want to remind residents to sign up for paperless billing and budget billing. You can move to budget billing, where your rates are, are set each, each month, as we transition to monthly. And it just makes life a lot easier for planning purposes. And you don't have to wait for a hard copy. You can go online and check your water and sewer bills at, at any time, and your usage at any time, too. So e-billing, paperless billing is the way to go. Now, we encourage everyone to sign up online. Mayor, I could go on further if you'd like, but I would be happy to follow up with the individual and see what's going on with his specific address.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Kachubski?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Okay. Counsel, before we get into reports, just a couple of things since they're on top of mind. Some specific questions he asked. The disc, and, and just jab me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vanderpoel. The no discount for summer. So what we used to do was give a twenty-six dollar discount on your summer bill. And that was because not all of the water you were using was likely going into the sewers, because a lot of people irrigate or have pools and whatever. And although the twenty-six dollar discount was nice, it hardly compensated for people who were heavy irrigators. What we've done is we've changed the bill, so you do not pay for the water, you do not pay for the sewer services when you water outdoors anymore. Your sewer bill is based on your winter consumption months. So whatever you consume during the winter is just gonna be applied throughout the entire year. That way, when your water usage goes up in the summer, it doesn't affect your sewer, okay? So you don't need the summer discount anymore, because if you're a heavy irrigator, you're going to be making up more than that twenty-six dollars. Another question you asked was, why are we getting new meters when the old ones are working fine? Yours may be working fine, but one thing you don't, don't realize is that the meters are so old that there is no longer any equipment being manufactured to read those meters. So the, the meter readers that we have now are it. They're literally, we've scoured the, the world for these things. We can't even find them. They're so old. Some of these meters are fifty years old. So they don't even make the meter readers anymore. They are obsolete, and they need to be replaced. Now, you said something about snowbirds. Now, I'm not sure what you're talking about, because we are, if you use water, whether you're a snowbird or not, you're gonna get charged for it. And I believe there's still a minimum monthly charge, right, Mr. Vanderpoel? So even if you use no water whatsoever, there's a, a certain charge that you're going to get, because it costs, there, there's fixed costs that have to be passed through to every user, regardless of how much water you use. So snowbirds will be charged. What you might be referring to is there's a little bit, in order to determine what your winter consumption is for sewer purposes, if you're a snowbird, there's, it's gonna be different, because you're not here. So we can explain that in more detail. But, you know, our goal is to be as transparent as possible. We're not fudging numbers. We, we spent, I know, one of the, one of the things on the resident survey is that residents feel like they're not being made part of the process, the decision-making process. But believe me, sir, we're here every two weeks. These, this is where decisions are made. We had a full day-long strategic planning session back in January that was attended by almost nobody, where we spent hours talking about the water meters, and the, the water bills, and the sewer bills, and rates, and all of this. During our budget process, we had three budget hearings, where this was discussed extensively, because all these changes went into effect with the new budget. So I know people are busy. They can't come to every council meeting. They can't watch every council meeting. But it's on our website. We put it on our social media. And if you have any questions, we are all accessible in our city administration. In fact, we, we're hiring additional people specifically for the purpose of answering the phone and, and explaining to you if you have any questions about your water bill. So we're, we're aiming to be as transparent as possible. We know that these water and sewer bills are a major concern for every resident. And believe it or not, a lot of people do read them, because that's one of our number-one issues and, and requests for services, helping people with water bills. So we're more than happy to reach out to you. So I'll, I'll stop. And counsel, is there anyone else who has any reports, new business, unfinished business? And let's be mindful of the Monday night football game starting in four minutes. And let's be mindful of the Monday night football game starting in four minutes. After I just took up 10 minutes of everybody's time. But anybody, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yanis?
Yeah, just, I just want to thank the, the folks who came out last Saturday for the Clinton River Watershed Council annual cleanup. We just cleaned up a, a very small area around the senior center and, and down towards the park and back. And even in that small little area, we collected over 20 pounds of trash. So the park is beautiful, it's, it's well maintained, but trash does build up and so we got to keep an eye on it. But I do want to thank the volunteers that came out, gave up part of their Saturday to come out and make Sterling Heights look a little bit better. And there, there will be other cleanups. Even though that was the annual cleanup, they do a weekly cleanup and I think Baumgartner Park is this week. And they do a lot of work inside Sterling Heights and Sterling Heights Parks. So if you get a chance and an opportunity to help out, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Council, Mr. Radke.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to comment on the fact that we're having this meeting on a Monday because I think all of us, or almost all of us, are going to the MML, Michigan Municipal League Conference this, this week. And we're hoping to bring back a trophy, saying that we have the best project with our new parks program here in Sterling Heights. I know that Mrs. Zarco's on the board, but I, I'm pretty confident that we have the best program and we're going to bring back that trophy. So that's why we're having it on a Monday. I appreciate everyone deviating from our normal thing and I guess we'll get out of here to watch Monday night football.
Mrs. Zarco?
Okay, two things. I'll reply to Mr. Radke's comments. Believe it or not, when I go to these meetings, they really do use us as an example, the city of Sterling Heights. It, it, you know, there's another program that's, I think it's called Leadership Macomb, and the speaker from the county kept on saying, "What a great safe street village that we passed and that's why our roads are so good." So whether we realize it or not, Sterling Heights is mentioned in a lot of places because of the good work that we do. But last Friday, Mrs. Schmidt and Mr. Yanis and myself took part in a rally over at the Ford plant in Romeo because they're, just like they had at one time, going to close the Shat plant, and we got involved in supporting people and legislators who could make a difference in keeping that plant open and we were very successful. We knew what it felt like, so we went there to support the workers at the rally. It was very interesting and they know that they have a long road ahead of them, but they also know that they have support not only just from, believe it or not, I think there's more support from Sterling Heights in the county than, but we want that plant to stay open because we have residents that work in that plant and we want them to have a job. There's 550 people that work there and we want them to continue working. So we're hoping that that place can be refurbished, it could be retooled, and you know what? I personally think it'd be a great place for the chip, you know, plant that do all the shortages we have, we could have it right down the road. So just to bring you up to date on that and, and you'll probably hear more about it in the future, but we're behind keeping that plant in, in Romeo open. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like you to know that when Councilwoman Kosky pulls something off the agenda, it's because she wants discussion, she wants the residents at home to know what we're doing. You have boasted, "We are a transparent government. We disclose everything. We let the residents know." So excuse me for taking so long tonight, but that was something I wanted the residents to know that we do. We are transparent. They need to know where their money is being spent and why it's being spent and what it's going to achieve for the good of the community. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to bring a little timer and you're going to get four minutes at a time also. Thank you.
It has nothing to do with the amount of time, okay? It really doesn't. We, we have longstanding procedures and policies on this council that you are entitled to take as much time as you need. The issue I had is that it was, and, and on important issues, we usually go once around and then if anyone has any follow-up, we go twice around. What we don't do is, one council member says something and another one responds, and then another one says something and then that original one responds again, and then another one, and they, we don't do that, that back and forth and back and forth. And so I have no problem with you taking as much time and getting as much information as you need. But I just think for the purposes of our meeting, it, it proceeds better when people say their, their piece and it doesn't get into a back and forth like it's a debate. Because that can get off the rails pretty quickly. But that was all I was trying to do, is say, we've had a chance and, and somebody else might say something that, somebody else would want to respond to, and if it went on like that, it would get, it would get unruly. That's just my, my opinion and I may be wrong on it, but that's, that's where that was coming from. It had nothing to do with the amount of time. Anyone else, council?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
So thank you, Mayor Taylor. So just kind of giving the, to give the residents a little bit of heads up, this, this coming Sunday, there is on the 26th of, the Sunday, the 26th, there is a softball game, 11 to 2 at Jimmy John's. It is between Warren and Sterling Heights Police Departments. So please, if you guys get a chance to come, that would be awesome. And you can see the fire, the police departments play against each other. And then coming up October 3rd, there is a fire department open house at Fire Station Number Four, that is at 11 to 2. So if you guys all kind of mark your calendars, those are some opportunities for some fun and games, and we look forward to seeing you there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Anyone else? If not, I would just say, "Go Lions."
Go Lions.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned, everyone. Thank you, I'll come in.